Uh, past ten o'clock, and I apologize for being late Commissioner Hoxton and I were at the U.S. Capitol. I welcome all of you and thank y'all for being here at our meeting. Let the record show that we do have court and everyone being present. Very one of the police stand for the plate.
For the flag. And the Republican Party stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item are the minutes. We'll have it for you. I'm going to move to the minute two. Second motion. The second to approve, discussion. Honorable people, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is claims.
Mr. Judge, I have a question on the payment. This payment, have they been paid or they don't think you have paid?
Uh, they're, they haven't been paid. It has to be approved first in order to be paid.
Are they going to be paid when they prove?
Some people have bigger questions. Just like very long time ago.
Please hear me, okay?
Okay. Have we, what have we done to get, to acquire the funds to pay this bill?
Okay, I'll, I'll answer that. Uh, I was in contact with Mr. Chapa at the bank, I guess, two weeks ago, and, uh, I was out all last week, so I don't know what he's hired, but he said he would take about a week for the funds to be ready, so there should be.
Your Honor, I would, I dropped by there, I was still working on him. I got, I really received my equipment, and I told him that we need to have the, the funding for that equipment. They're, they're still waiting that they're, they were, you promised to, okay? The thing is that, what he told me just, we have to have some court action, that there's nothing been done there at the, at the bank or something. And I was there, and he said, if we didn't have court action to, to approve the loan, after we do it, it'll be another week.
We, and you know, you are right, Commissioner, we need the court to approve it. I did ask him for one and a half million dollars, you know, a line of credit for one and a half.
Right.
Uh, and he, he said, no problem, but if it's okay with the court, I'll call a special meeting for Friday, so we can go ahead and pass it through.
I, I asked him, I said, is the judge talking? He said, yeah, I don't have a problem. But I said, I cannot do it until you have court action.
I have a hundred problems with special meetings, because in the prison, we have seventy-three thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars pending bills that will not be paid and we don't take no court action.
Yeah, and, and a lot of that, Commissioner, had to do with the last meeting that we had, that no bills were submitted. Uh, and if, if anybody had, I guess, probably would not have been paid. But I, we'll call a special meeting for Friday, for Friday, ten o'clock, and I'll have Mr. Chapa come in and present whatever he needs to present, so that that can give him.
Your Honor, I don't know maybe you could, but I, I don't know if he can start doing any paperwork on it, so we can get it.
He, no, then that's why I called him, because he does need to start doing all that, he needs to take it to work.
But he cannot proceed without the court?
He cannot give final approval.
I know, I, I, can, can he proceed without everything and then have the final approval on Friday and get the money expedited?
Yeah, and, and I'll talk to him.
Because the credit, they need to get paid.
Once, once, once the, once the loan is approved, how does this money get dispersed?
Okay. Once, it's, it's really a line of credit, uh, or a loan, but we're not going to take it all at, at once. And certainly, we want to drag it as long as we can, and Mr. Carter and I had a conversation about that, so that we don't pay interest until we need, if, if, let's say, uh, next week, or next month, or whatever, we need two or three hundred, we go and draw two or three hundred. The following couple of weeks, we need another three or four hundred, we go and take out three or four hundred, and, and we'll keep going until the end of the fiscal year.
My question is just, how is it decided how it gets distributed, or, or dispersed to the proper, like, for example, the general fund and the road and bridge, how does it get?
Wherever money is needed, Commissioner. You know, say, in general, Mr. Carter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said, on the, the road and bridge, we were short about two hundred thousand, two hundred and seven thousand. Is that correct?
The latest estimates, which I'm prepared to present in a few minutes, shows a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Okay, good. Last time you, you mentioned two hundred and seven thousand, right?
I did last.
Okay, e- even if, let's say we're short a hundred and fifty, we would draw two hundred, two hundred and seven hundred, for, 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 wherever it's needed, that's where it goes. Any other question?
No, sir.
Sam, you said that?
Here, Honorable Judge.
Is there a motion to move?
The best two.
Move the second, discussion. Honorable people, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Before we go into our reports, uh, is there anyone from out of town that needs to come before the court? Certainly, welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting, but we have other things. Okay, now we'll go on with our reports. Uh, the gas, transportation, tax assessment.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm here to give out the report for June the 2017. You have it in front of you. The total collections, it writes on, June the 16th, the 2016, to June the 2017, with a difference of, it's two hundred.
Do we, do we have your report here?
Excuse me?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Sorry.
Okay, as you can see, on June the 2016, we, the total collections was four hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred and forty-five with seventy-five cents. To June the 17th, it's six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five and sixty-two cents, with a difference more than last year, of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars with eighty-seven cents. The total wide collection is three hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-six with sixty-four cents, and June the 17th, it's four hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five with twenty-three cents, with a difference more than last year with a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and ninety-eight with fifty-nine cents. The total current is two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty with seventy-three cents. On to June the 27th, it's two fifty-nine, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and four with thirty-three cents, with a difference more than last year, two thousand one hundred and fifty-three with sixty, sixty cents. The total delinquency is two hundred and thirty-six thousand thirty-five with, with two cents, and the July the 2017, the June, I'm sorry, four hundred and three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five with sixty-four cents, with a difference of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty with sixty cents. The current MNO collections as of May 2017, it's eight million two hundred, two hundred nineteen thousand three, three hundred and twenty-eight with fifty-five cents. The total, the FM tax collections as of May 2017, it's three million nine hun- nine five, nine, uh, excuse me, five, five, five ninety-four, um, three thirty-one with sixty-one cents. We have a total collected of sixty-seven percent of our, of our tax levy. And behind it, Mr. Peña, we have, I, I have the, the report detailed, so you have any questions?
Mr. Peña, let me ask you one question here.
Yes, sir.
You have total collections, so, on that, and then you have a total countywide, and then you have total current.
What, come on.
When you, right in the front page, it says, total countywise, you have, uh, last year 2017, this year four twenty-nine, and then you have on the bottom, total current, two fifty-six, and then, two, two, uh, two fifty-six, and you have two fifty-nine. What is the difference? Is that a general fund and road and bridge, or is it, I mean, or is it, it says, total countywide, three hundred and seventeen, last year four twenty-nine, and then you have total?
It's a difference.
Current, two, two hundred and fifty-six, and this year, two fifty-nine.
That's the total, total white collection, and this is the total current.
What is the total, uh, total countywide?
What is the difference if you want to do it?
What is it? Is it for the general fund, or is it for road and bridge, or, I mean?
This is for the general fund.
Countywide?
This is for the general fund.
I guess, I guess what it is, Commissioner, the total collections and the total countywide and total delinquency.
Nobody says, on the bottom, the total current. It is total current.
Yeah, the, the total current.
That's it.
That is what collected this year.
No, it is last year. Last year was two fifty-six, but I don't know if you should describe it per month, or?
Well, it's, it's from June 2016, it's a comparison from sixteen.
Yeah, I understand, you say, but I'm trying to find, see, what is it? Total countywide, and then it's total current.
Okay.
So we've got two different numbers.
The total countywide is the four entities, the four, four county entities, and the total is just the county.
And the total current is what?
Just the county, uh, the 2016.
And that would be for the month of June. Correct? So of the four hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five, two hundred and fifty?
Ours, ours is only?
Two fifty-nine.
Two fifty-nine.
Right. The, uh, on the bottom of that same page, Mr. Peña, you have current county MNO and FM, you have C tax, and this is S of May 31st. Why, why May not, and not June?
It's a, it should be S of June, I'm sorry, it's a June.
It's a, S of June?
Yes, it's a June, I'm sorry.
So we're at, at the, at the, at the total collection for the county, for the current tax, the word, how about fifty-six?
One sixty-seven.
No, no.
For the county, it's, uh, two hundred and fifty-six thousand for the 2016 and 2017, it's, um, four hundred and twenty, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five with twenty-three cents.
What percentage of the current tax that we collected?
Sixty-seven.
What?
Sixty-seven.
Six-seven?
Yes.
And we projected eighty percent, sir?
Eighty-five, I believe.
Eighty-five, so we're lacking, we're lacking, uh?
Ninety.
Eh?
Eighty, eighty percent.
Eighty percent? Cool. When do they start coming the liquid?
Uh, we patiently sending out notices this year.
We, we, this tax, will we card this month only, or?
No, the delinquency starts on July 1st. So July, August, September, it's the delinquency.
For the year, so actually, it's, right now, we, on the current taxes, we didn't comply with the eighty-five percent, we're sixty-seven?
Yeah, that, that looks kind of low to me, but...
Doesn't sound right, but, uh?
Yeah, it, it, it looks low.
We should have been already at eighty-something. We're, we're sixty, we're sixty-seven, we've got a problem. We'd be like, if that, the current collection for this year, we're way under.
Yeah, we, we need to look at that.
I think you, probably you got a type of somewhere in there, you got a King V, I mean, I hope not.
No, we, we would have gone broke two months ago.
We have a special meeting Friday, can you check into your numbers, maybe Friday you can?
Sure, sure, uh, well.
I mean, you, don't, I mean, don't feel bad, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to see where we're at, you know, with our, with our money, because, I mean, I thought we were, I thought we, I thought you got a different number before, that, that looked better than the collection.
During the summer, we have the slowest collect, collection, and last month, uh, right after I gave out my report and I issued out my checks, I have to give advancements for more.
No, I understand, but what I'm trying to say, ma'am, is that we already went into the delinquency. They're delinquent already.
Oh, yes.
The current taxes, we're under, uh, eighty percent of the collection.
They're sending out, they're sending out notices for the delinquent to, to collect for this.
Yeah, I know, we understand.
I think what Commissioner Artest is saying, is that if that sixty-seven percent holds true, then we as commissioners, we have to do something else.
Because we, we, we hit with the money that we budgeted, didn't come in.
Yeah, nor- normally by this time, as the Commissioner said, we'd be around an eighty-three, eighty-four.
Yeah, sometimes we have got up to ninety or a hundred percent. So I think you got a number wrong there, but you can check it out, I hope it is.
Well, I hope it is for our benefit. Yes. Any more questions?
Any other question? Thank you.
The report is not ready because of bank rec, good morning Commissioners, good morning Judge.
Good morning.
It's not ready because the bank statements are just coming in, but I did want to come before you and report to you that cash is very, very low, and I know that there was a, a discussion about the funds, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
We, we, we need to take it, take care of it at the bank, so we can start drawing the money, I think, but...
Was under the impression that it would have been on the agenda for this meeting, and, uh, the road and bridge alone is going to need about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
But we're going to ask for a million and a half, so we'll be all right as soon as, as, as soon as we need the money, something, they'll be available, just draw them down, but we need to take the action and get it done.
We have to show some compassion to the vendors, that they need to be paid. Uh, it's, it's not right that you buy stuff and you don't pay it because you just don't want to pay it.
We understand that, and, well, again, we're going to tell you.
Any other question, comment?
Thank you.
Uh, Sheriff's Department?
Judge Commissioners, good morning, gentlemen. Good morning. Here to report the monthly revenues for the past month of June, and recap May if necessary. We have, uh, revenues from the Rhode Island City Police Department at four hundred and twenty, Roma Police Department at three hundred and ninety, secure assistance for their jail commissions would be two thousand one hundred and twenty-four, and revenue coming in from the United States Marshal Service, one twenty with sixteen dollars. Total revenue for the month of June was one twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty. The projection for next month on our federal inmates is going to be approximately between seventy-seven to eighty-three federal inmates, so the revenue coming in from the Marshal Service should not sway very much for next month's, projection of course.
You said next month, the projection is be, be going?
It's going to be, if not the same, about, uh, and that's going on the numbers as of today, for the month of July. Today we have seventy-six inmates.
The Sheriffet had mentioned to me that, that he was negotiating a new rate for the federal prisoners.
That's correct, Judge. Coincidentally, I'm the one that's looking into that.
Okay, how's that going?
It's a lengthy process, and it's kind of a, here you go, learn as you go, but I have a good relationship with the Marshal Service, so I'm, I'm fairly confident that this is going to pan out first in the future.
Any timeline?
Um, they're giving me anywhere between five and six months. But, uh, once I have an update on that for you, sir, I'll happily give you an update on it.
Okay. Any other question?
Thank you, Judge. Gentlemen.
Uh, clerk, Mr. Onzettis?
Commissioner, Judge, uh, I'll let you my report before you all, if you all have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Commissioner Onzettis. International Bridge, Commissioner Peña.
Ms. Caden is going to present the International Bridge report.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This is for the, um, total revenue from traffic for June 2017. It's two hundred and three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three fifty cents, and we show an increase of eight thousand five hundred and thirty-four for the month of June 2017 compared to the month of June 2016. And, uh, we show a decrease of twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-one with fifty cents. That's on the collection for the month of June 2017 compared to the month of June, I mean, of the month of May of 2017. We have, um, other collections of seven hundred and ninety-six thirty-five, so the total, the grand total collection for June, it's two hundred and four thousand six hundred and nineteen with eighty-five cents. Do you have any questions?
Uh, yes. Do you recall when we implemented the new rate tow, for the toll?
It was in November the first.
November of last?
Uh, last year, 2016.
Sixteen, okay. So this is still reflecting?
Yes, sir.
Some of the?
Yes.
Any questions?
But it's still, it shows an increase on every, every month?
Yes.
For the whole year?
Yes, sir. It's always, um, during the summer that we get a little bit less.
Yeah, anyway, it's still, it has shown an increase.
From last year.
Every month.
Yes. Any more questions?
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Federal and state programs money?
It's going to be taken with the next commission.
Okay.
The reports that, good, good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for having me here this morning. The, uh, the reports that I submitted for the agenda this morning include a projected revenue and expenditure report for both the Road and Bridge Fund and for the General Fund. Um, I'll take the Road and Bridge Fund report first. Um, the current year projected revenue shows actual revenue year today.
Mr. Carter, I don't think we have the record. We do? I'm sorry.
You know, I, I, each Commissioner there, a hand down before on every, uh, so we have time to look at it for this.
You know, I could not agree with you more, Commissioner. I think we need to set a cutoff date for reports, because it's really, you know, and I know you, you brought it in, but it's really unfair when, when we're given all this stuff here in the morning, and we have to make decisions without knowing or reading what it's all about. You know, uh, if you all would like?
The other thing I've been arguing, Judge, is that, and the other thing I've been arguing is table it, be ready. We have to be ready here, they have to be ready. Everybody has to wear a paycheck, be ready.
We've got a new Commissioner, and he'll be there, and I, he'll be here as long as, and I still have trouble trying to locate him, you know, I think we had a head here.
Becky, for, for Friday's meeting, put an agenda, item, discussing, take action, on setting cutoff date for reports to be given, so that by Friday, the reports can be taken, hopefully by Thursday, to the Commissioners, so they can have the weekend at least to look it over, and, and myself.
You know, I don't need to have my Friday, but I can at least have it here on hand before they can start, you know?
Well, but, but I think on some items, it'd be best if we have to ask questions, you know?
We need to be sure it's a disciple, whatever.
Yeah, so, put that also for, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter, go ahead. We got time, Carter.
Okay, well, um, actual revenues year-to-date in the Road and Bridge Fund, uh, and this is, uh, this is through, this is through July the 7th, or, uh, no, actually, this is through, uh, July 3rd. I did this report with data from last week. Was five million seventy-eight thousand. Projected revenue for the remainder of the year is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, giving total projected revenue of five million five hundred and three thousand. Projected expenditures, uh, year-to-date, the actual year-to-date was four million two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Uh, the remaining budgeted expenditures available, one million three hundred and eighty thousand, giving total projected expenditures of five million six hundred and fifty-four thousand. Uh, therefore, the projected budget deficit for this year is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, and that's just for this year. That's not including, um, that's not including results.
Mr. Carter, do you have those numbers, uh, in, in a sheet or a spreadsheet? Because I, I don't have it.
They can get it covered real quick.
I came here in a month's row today, and I need to ask the JPs and?
Change order.
I don't know what you mean.
Becky, can, can you make up these words? We don't have this. We'll, we'll take a little break until we get the, so we can be looking at the same numbers you're reading.
Would you like for me to repeat the first page?
Please, please.
Yeah. Okay. Judge and Commissioners, let's start with the projected revenues and expenditures report on the Road and Bridge Fund. Roma numeral one shows actual year-to-date revenue of five million, seventy-eight thousand. Projected revenue through September thirtieth of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, giving total projected revenue of five million, five oh three thousand. The actual year-to-date expenditures were four million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Remaining budgeted expenditures available, one million, three hundred and eighty thousand, giving total projected expenditures of five million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand. The net result of that is a projected budget deficit for this year of one hundred and fifty-one thousand. Then, on page two, um, to show the result of all of that, the current cash balance of July the fifth was eighty-one thousand. Due from the payroll clearing account was two hundred and seventy-three thousand, giving current cash available of three hundred and fifty-four thousand. The beginning deficit balance in the fund at the beginning of this year was one million and three thousand. Add the current year budget deficit of a million, of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, gives a total committed uses of one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Therefore, the subtracting the budgeted, the total budgeted uses of one million, one fifty-four from the cash available of three hundred and fifty-four thousand gives total cash needed to make the fund whole at year-end of eight hundred thousand dollars. Then, uh, let's go to the same report, the projected revenues and expenditures report of the General Fund. Actual year-to-date revenues of thirteen million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand. The projected revenues for the remainder of the year of three million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, giving total projected revenue of sixteen million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The actual expenditures year-to-date were thirteen million, nine hundred and five thousand. Remaining budgeted expenditures available are three million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, giving total projected expenditures of seventeen million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. That results in a projected budget deficit for this year of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. On page two, to summarize the cash position for the county through year-end, the current balance as of July the fifth was two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. The projected budget deficit was nine, uh, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand. Therefore, the current projected cash available is a negative six hundred and fifty-one thousand. Add to that, the amount that's due to the Road and Bridge Fund to make it whole for the year of one million and three thousand, uh, gives a projected fund balance of negative of one thousand, six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So, there's a, there's a brief summary, a very condensed summary of the, uh, the condition of the, the two main funds of the county for this year.
So, based on these projections, how much of a deficit are we going to be in? The county's going to be totaling, uh, General Fund and Road and Bridge, based on your projection?
Well, if you.
Yeah, I'm seeing this number, I just want to make sure, you know?
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm, I'm, I'm seeing this number, but I want to, for you to repeat for me, what's, what's your projected, uh, you know?
Well, for the, for the General Fund, it needs, um, a projected need of one million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand. And the Road and Bridge Fund needs eight hundred thousand, so that is two point, roughly, it's two million.
Two and a half million, that's what the counties will be short for this year, based on your, your estimates.
Well, in, in these two reports, the, the beginning deficit balance in the Road and Bridge Fund is counted on both reports. So, subtract the one million, three thousand.
Then you're talking about what, what we started with, the deficits of last year, money that was missing.
No, it was not missing. It was just never funded to the Road and Bridge Fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
We go back to the same thing, the former Minister, Commissioner, but see, uh.
Yeah, I understand, and I can.
I, I think we're going to be short at the end of the year, not counting what was the beginning balance or whatever. About a million, one million, two.
Yes, for, for, for this year's operations, um, the conclusion would be to add the one hundred and fifty-one thousand deficit in the Road and Bridge Fund to the nine hundred and forty-nine thousand deficit in the General Fund. So, a million, one million, two, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's assuming that things.
Everything's coming, everything comes in.
However, at the meeting that we had earlier, that might be.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have, and I'll go ahead and say something. We met with Duke Energy earlier this morning, and, and they owe us a couple of checks that I would notice when I was working on the budget, on the payment in lieu of taxes. It's almost half a million that they owe, and they, they assured us that that would be coming in. So, we can deduct that half a million from the million, one million, two, if it comes in. If it doesn't, then we need to borrow it. But, you know, there's, there's other streams of revenue that might be coming in before the end. But, but I'll get.
Well, yes, the, no, no one's, no one's crystal ball is, is perfect. So, the, these estimates are based on.
But this goes.
On prior years and trends in the current year and other, other pieces of information that I could pull together from the.
Did you, did you take into account, Mr. Carter, monies that may be out there in different accounts? For example, the bridge or, uh, fines and forfeiture and stuff like that that have not come in yet?
Well, indirectly, I, I did indirectly. It's really hard to pin down. Exact numbers, but I, I, I base these estimates on what happened in prior years and, uh, and trends I see happening in this year, so, uh, indirectly.
And, and this is pretty much what I've always thought, that we'd be short about a million, one million. So, I think we're.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, one more question. Did you submit the letters asking for extension on the, on the, on the grants?
Yes, I did. Yes.
We had a response?
I got a verbal response, I did not get a written response. And the verbal response was, no extensions will be granted.
Yeah, I, I got some written responses saying that, you know, letting us know that the audits were not done and the consequences. So, I think one of the, the major consequence is that the CDBG money that comes from the con, uh, we're not going to be allowed to apply. So, for two years, you know, we're not going to have any money. That was totally.
That's, that's a, that's a, a definite no.
It's a definite no. We won't even be able to apply. But again, you know, I, I keep saying this was nothing having to do with the Commissioners' Court. This was action taken by, by the District Judges, not us. Extension office, Ms. Moda?
Good morning, Commissioners. I went ahead and laid a packet for each of you, uh, showing some of the highlights from the last three months. And for some of you, it's a six months because maybe we didn't get the packet to you. I don't have any revenue to report, and I wish with all my heart that I did. But I do want to tell you that, uh, in my office right now, I have ten people employed, and they're all being paid with grant money. And that's money coming into the county. And some of them are student workers and some of them are grant people. And I want to thank you all for all that you do. And I know when we hear all about the deficits and everything, but Commissioner, I've been here probably longer. There was a time when, um, Commissioners' Court would pay us with a script, a strip, because we didn't even have payroll checks. And a Mr. Gonzalez would come to the bank and sign for it, and then we would go take the little script and get paid. So, I have all the faith in the world that you all will work this out. I know it's difficult, and I know the tremendous stress that you all are under. But I know we're in good hands. God bless you.
I, I, I was asked, this problem they have where you go out there at the, at the centers and do the planting of, you know?
Yes, the gardens.
Gardens, yeah. Can these people going to, a, a private owner that has, wants to plant an acre or two of, of, you know, crop there to?
Yes, I can work with you on that. I have specialists and I have people that can come.
But they can, can they go out there other than just the county places? They can go to private property or?
Yes, well, we work, our idea on those, uh, on those gardens, so we have our demonstration gardens. And what we're trying to do is to teach the people to know how to do it, and then we expect them to hopefully go home. And we do have like about thirty-seven gardens that are, people are growing in their own homes. But if you're talking about an acreage type thing, I can work with some of the specialists. Uh, and I know, um, my coworker, Omar.
Can they go show over there, how to, you know?
We do the.
Drip irrigation and?
Yes, we do the soil testing, you know, and then we go in and then we look at what, uh, is available as far as water and all of that, and then they can show you, uh, how to do the water, the drip irrigation and all the compost that needs to go in and everything that goes into, you know, getting a good crop. We can also get some seeds for you.
Pre-seeds?
Yes. Things that grow in Stark County. And, uh, and we're having very good results from that. Uh, I have some videos that I can show you as far as the children that are growing these gardens. And now, it's, it's all about health. And some of these grants are from CDC. And because of the health issues that we have here in Stark County, I don't think I need to tell you all about it. But we have children that are eight years old that have fatty livers. And that is like somebody that has cirrhosis of the liver, which is somebody that drinks a great deal. And these children will not live to be twenty. That is the seriousness of the things that we have here in our county. So, we have some excellent doctors that are here now and working with the families, and doing all kinds of nutrition programs and everything. But we have some very serious health issues in our county. And that's what we're all about. Our grants that I have are with CDC, and we've been able to maintain them for over five years. And it's all because of what's happening in our gardens and in our, in our schools and the support that we have from you all.
Ms. Moda, thank you so much for your kind words as far as assuring that we'll be out of this mess that we're in, and now we will.
I know, it's, I mean, I, I have all the faith in the world, and I know sometimes maybe the young people might not, you know, they haven't been around as long as I have, because I've been here since the last century.
Like Mr. Carter says, you know, we don't have a crystal ball.
That's right.
We get our tail cut and crack. But we'll be out.
I know. And I have all the faith in the world that you all will do it, and, uh, and thank you very much for what you do.
We're going to contact one through my family when we get there.
Somebody.
I do want to thank you, Ms. Moda and Omar, for all the work that you all do in, in our communities. Believe it or not, I do get a lot of very positive comments from the sunny city of, of the different areas.
Oh, yes. And Roma, the Roma area with the school district is just incredible. I don't mean to, you know, put any other school districts down, but, um, they have been granted so many, uh, grants specifically because of the, the commitment that they have in the schools. For Roma, their new, the Shack, which is a school health, um, uh, committee, has already taken, signed in for next year that every school will have the Walk Across Texas, which means the children will have to walk, you know, for every day. And, I mean, they have taken things, they have abolished all of the sweets in the school. And of course, that's a state law, but, you know, oftentimes it's bended. But, you know, they have taken a tremendous, uh, and I work very closely with La Gría, uh, Middle School and La Gría High School. We have a big, huge garden over there, and we have a big one also at the other high school in Roma. And those kids are going to receive a certificate that, because they've been in the gardening program since they were in elementary, and then they went in, and now we're building gardens at the middle school because there's such a demand for them. So, when they go into high school and they have these gardens, they're going to get a certificate where they already know all about, you know, the soils, all about gardening and what grows in this area. Maybe we can bring some of our farmers back. We have literally no farmers that are initially from Stark County anymore.
I, I did want to thank both of you publicly, because I know we don't do it as often as we should, but we, we do appreciate all of you.
We appreciate all the support that we get. At the Commissioners, I know I have several of the gardens at the different sites, so thank you.
Any other report that I might have? If not, Roma number nine, six. When this is approved, the new vendors list. I will, we approve the vendor. One second to approve discussion. Honorable, please, I.
Aye.
The post, motion carries. Next item is the, uh, tax resale bids received for properties of.
Good morning, Judge, good to see you, Commissioners. For the record, Michael Conno, I'm a partner with the Limebarger Firm, and, uh, I'm actually filling in for my colleague, Gustavo Martinez, who had a, a medical procedure, so couldn't be here. I want to kind of take you all through the process of what these tax resale properties are. Basically, one of the tools that we have available to us in collecting your delinquent taxes is foreclosing on properties on people who don't pay their, their taxes. But I just want to assure, assure the court that when we do foreclose on properties, we primarily focus on either empty lots or abandoned homes. Most of your taxpayers who, who do have homesteads do come into our office, they do make payment arrangements with, with our staff, and they do pay on a monthly basis. So, if you should have, let me back up, I think all of you have our packet in your, in your packet. But if you look at the, the packet of these twenty properties that we put up for sale, all of these are, like I said, abandoned homes, so they're all really eyesores within your community where they're just vacant lots. The way the process works is once we file a lawsuit and people don't make arrangements to pay with us, you know, the, the State District Court judge does allow us to foreclose on these properties. We put these properties up for sale here at the court, literally on the courthouse steps on the first Tuesday of every month. It's a very archaic process, but that's what the state, you know, governs that we do. A lot of the times, the very first time we put a property up for sale, if it doesn't sell, it's what we call, it's struck off to the entities. Because the very first time we put up for sale, the starting bid has to be the amount of taxes owed or the appraised value of the property. So, a lot of these properties just fail to get that high of a bid. So, if no one bids on it, then you all basically become the owners of that property from that point going forward. Now, it's, it's a very important distinction because once that happens, not only did you not collect the taxes that were owed to you, but now, since you own the property, the property becomes tax exempt. So, if they haven't paid property taxes in fifteen years, and then now it gets struck off to you, as long as it stays in your inventory, you're not taxing that property. So, we try really hard to put. So we try really hard to put those on a resale. Once we go back and resell that property, sell it a second time, uh, the auctioneer is actually allowed, or the sheriff's, the sheriff's office is allowed to take a bid, kind of like a, a general auction. They, you know, they, they keep on coming down the price till someone offers a bid, and it starts to go back up. And again, these are very public auctions. We do them here in front of the courthouse, we advertise in the local paper, and we usually get at least a hundred people to show up to these auctions. So what you have before you are, we put up twenty properties for sale, seventeen received bids, three did not. Uh, so out of those seventeen, two, uh, one individual came into our office this last Friday and redeemed the property. There's a process available to someone that if they lose their, their property in a resale or in a, in a foreclosure, they have a certain amount of time to come and get their property back and pay an extra fee. So we had someone come and do that, which is obviously good for everybody, for them and for us as well. Uh, so we, we have before you is fifteen properties that we're proposing that we actually approve the sell-up to these, these bidders. Uh, it'll bring in about thirty-three thousand dollars to the county. Uh, Judge, and aside from it bringing in thirty-three thousand dollars to the county, the most important thing to recognize is that it actually puts a property back on the tax rolls. And, uh, all of these bidders, before they can bid on these properties, have to bring us a, a certificate showing they're not delinquent property owners on any other property. Most of these people are actually investors, they buy these properties, they fix them up, they spruce them up, they increase the value of the property, and they usually sell them or rent them out. So it's actually a good, uh, uh, it's a good thing for the county.
So you did check that, uh, that all these people that bought are, are current under taxes?
Absolutely, yes, and actually, we're not allowed to take, when they register that morning of the bidding process, they have to bring us their certificate from the county tax office that shows they're not delinquent. That's also a state rule.
Yeah, because I got, I got, people told me that, uh, apparently one of these properties was sold, the actual buyer is delinquent, but he put it under somebody else's name. But I think that's a property that was, wanted to be redeemed. And they called me, I said, well, you got so much time to get it back, you're going to have to pay forty-five percent of, of what the, the people paid for, but if you wanted it, you can get it back.
Right. Unfortunately, that does happen a lot, Mr., Commissioner Garza, uh, we have individuals who are delinquent, and they'll go start a DBA and bring us a cer- a certificate for the DBA, but unfortunately, we can't stop them from doing that unless we have.
I understand, but they, I understand that because they knew the people were there.
Right.
And they knew that she, it was a lady that owes taxes, but she got somebody else to go and bid up for her. Apparently, that property was, I think it's going to be bought back by the previous owner.
Well, hopefully that's the case, and, and if that's the case, at the end of the day, we collected the money on behalf of the county, so we're happy with that.
What I don't understand is, let's see, and this is what I'm, I'm, they'd say that that person that, that, that was the owner or the inheritor of that place, apparently that's what I hear, somebody else would go buys the property, where he sold, they'd say sixty thousand dollars on the property, this guy buys it for ten, and then I go buy it back for him for an extra twenty-five percent of what he paid for. He anyway saved thirty or forty thousand dollars of what was owed.
That is a very rare case, Commissioner Garza, but it does happen, and I'll tell you, the reason that happens. Yeah, no, that, that happens, and I've seen that in other counties across the state. The reason that happens is, is, you know, a, a mom and dad will die, and they'll die without a will, intestate, what we call intestate. They die without a will, there's five or six brothers and sisters who, who technically are heirs to the property. One of them lives on the property, the other ones really don't care about it. That one person who lives on the property can't get a loan, can't get title, it's too late to file a probate with the court. So a lot of times, what they do is they, they allow the taxes to build up, they wait till it gets foreclosed on, and they get what we call a straw man to go and purchase that property, but they take a risk that someone else may buy it instead of them. So that's, those are little loopholes in the system that we can't.
They're still for savings for them because they save, because they owe sixty thousand. He buys it for ten, and then the other guy would just give him, uh, twelve, twelve-five for it, he saved thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Right. No, and Commissioner Garza, I wish I could tell you that it doesn't happen, but it does, but there's nothing that any of us can do to stop it.
You know.
But, yeah, and I, I've seen it happen, um.
Uh, it is happening, but you know, what, what can we do?
Right.
Like I said, these people call me, I don't know, I don't even know who they are, so partly, I said, well, you can buy it back?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, I think the solution to that, Commissioner, is really that we need to become more aggressive, and, and we're doing that every day, is become more aggressive in the collection of the delinquent taxes so we do not get.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, but I'll, I'll talk to George and the guys because I know my, my brother who passed away, they own the, well, it was the, the, his family inherits, his sons and daughters, and he'd been delinquent, just an empty lot for I don't know how many years, and I've told time after time, you're not selling, you're not, you're not doing any good to the, to the property owners that haven't sold it yet. And you're, it's already, I think it's over forty thousand dollars, and the property's worth only maybe ten or eight thousand dollars.
With, with those, with those kind of concerns, Commissioners, all we need is for someone to contact our office, let us know which property it is, and we'll, we'll fast-track the litigation on that property and, and we'll start to move it. And I'll tell you, I'm glad I, I stuck around for the, for the, for my turn on the agenda and didn't take the option to, to present earlier because I, I heard, uh, you know, where you stand financially, and I'll tell you that I, I think there may be an error with the current tax collection numbers as well. Um, I think they're a little higher than, than what, what they're reported to be, but even if they're not, if they are that low, I'll tell you that I'm glad I heard that now so I can go back to the office, that gives us a couple of months, because that money's not lost, it just hasn't been collected yet. So that means that we can step up our, step up our efforts, make sure everyone in our office is working extremely hard for the next couple of months to try to recapture that money before the end of this fiscal year.
You know, my, my, my deal is that you're not making, you're not helping the taxpayer by not putting up their property for sale, because if they can't pay ten thousand dollars right now, they won't be able to pay twenty in two, three years from now.
I, I, I agree, Commissioner. I wish, I, I wish they could understand that when we actually.
And I tell you, it happened to one of my brothers, it, just sell it, he paid his check, just sell it. Soon as they put up for sale, they came up with the money, but he, they, they paid about thirty thousand dollars, penalty and interest.
Right.
And I told you guys, you know, so you're, you're not helping anybody that you don't enforce them to pay tax, because it's going to be worse.
Commissioner, I'll, I'll give you my, my personal assurance that I'm going to be on top of, of Stark County's collections for the next couple of months, and we're going to do everything possible to identify all those properties, and again.
I'll give you the danger, but it's still out there.
Absolutely.
I haven't heard it, it's older, I never seen a sign of it.
And I think it makes sense that we always start with the properties that are empty prop, we don't want to displace families from their homes. I don't think that's your goal, and that's certainly not our goal.
No.
But those that are unproductive properties, if it's an empty lot, if it's empty acreage, if it's, you know, vacant commercial property, um, I think it, it's fair game that they know that we're going to come after them very hard, and we're going to start selling them faster than we have in the past. And I, I think that it, the county's in position that we start doing that.
Oh, yes, I, I agree with you, I like that, because we have, I've seen, you know, trying to enforce, little, little taxpayer, as small taxpayers at home, and we've got bigger guys out there that are slipping off, slipping off as much as they can, which is worse for them, but, you know.
I'll, I'll make sure that George is in contact with you, Commissioner, and then we'll work closely with Ms. Alena, see if we can identify some of those that we can start targeting, sooner the better.
So, so, Mike, what you're asking is that the court approve the resale bids that you received?
Right, and that would be, Commissioner, Judge?
Item seven?
Right, that would be, I, I think the list that we gave you in the packet has seventeen properties, but the last two, which is, uh, cause number TS fourteen dash eighty-seven, and, or that's it, which is, uh, number nineteen and twenty, those two will be excluded from the list. So what you have on the next agenda item, Judge, is the resolution that approves that. I'll make sure that the exhibit attached to that resolution does not have those two lots, and those, those are the two that were actually redeemed last week.
So you're, you're going to rebid on item eight, uh, nineteen and twenty?
That is correct.
Any questions? Questions? Um, you know, and, and again, hate to see this, that we're getting a lot less than what was owed to us, but I totally agree, by us hanging on to it, we're losing money because they're not taxable. So we want to get it out there so that we can start collecting taxes on them again.
Judge, you'll be seeing me out here a lot more often, uh, not only for, for the, for the foreclosures, but for covering court and whatnot, and I want to make sure that we actually start pushing a lot of these cases much faster than it has been fast.
I, I really hope that on the delinquency, you know, there's a number that I come up with, that kind of the target that we need from the owner to collect, that you can exceed that this year. You heard our conversation earlier.
I did, Judge, I heard it loud and clear. And I, and I'll tell you that I know we're up, we're, we're missing the last few months' reports, but, uh, based on the checks we receive in our office, we know we're up in Stark County, and we're up significantly, but it's not good enough for us, obviously it's not good enough for the county. My goal is to really ramp up our efforts these last two months and then, you know, continue going forward, but we're going to do our best to try to minimize that deficit.
Just as I see here, one property, judgment was twenty-three thousand, and, and the amount bid was only three thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, that's how come I say it's very discouraging, that they owe us so much, that they went so, so long without us supplying any pressure for them to pay.
Right. Now, if, if I can't, Commissioner Garza, so let me just give you some really quick background on why this happens. Uh, when, when these people are buying these tax foreclosure, uh, properties, one, they're buying them sight unseen, two, they're, they don't get a warranty deed, all they get is a sheriff's deed, so it's subject to any and all other federal tax liens. So we don't know if there's any other tax liens that may encumber that property. Second of all, they know that there's a right of redemption, so they may outlay their three thousand dollars and so, you know, they really can't move on the property for six months because the original taxpayer may come back and say, I want my property back.
Six months? I thought it was two years.
Two years on homesteads, six, most, but we don't sell homesteads, so normally, the standard's six months. And it's, but since these are resales, that six months starts from the date of the actual sale. Um, so there's a lot of factors involved, and plus, a lot of these, the value, what, what you see as the appraisal value, Commissioner, is appraisal value that's given to the property by the appraisal district, which we all know sometimes is not a good market value. Uh, the way the appraisal district works is they slap a, an appraisal value on the property, and they wait for the property owner to go and protest it if it's too high. So a lot of these that are abandoned homes, the appraisal value is based on the square footage of the home, but it doesn't take into account that the home is not inhabitable, you know, so it, it's really a false value, but we have to, by law, we have to go off the appraisal va, appraisal district's value. So a lot of time, you have these disparities, um, whoever's buying the property may actually have to go in there and remove that impediment, so you really don't have that value on that property.
Any questions? Not on the, obtain a motion if the court desires that we go ahead and approve.
Motion. Or who said, who moved?
Move in second to approve the resale, or the, the bids on the resale. Uh, any further discussion? Honitor, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eight is, uh, as was discussed, this is to authorize the delinquent attorneys to rebid, uh, right, the last two items.
Right, what, right, that's just the resolution to approve the, the one through fifteen, Your Honor, actually.
Uh, yeah, that was item seven.
Okay.
We approved that. Uh, eighteen is, I'm sorry, eight is the one where we authorized the tax resale of the last two that you need to sell. Is that correct?
No, no, we're not going to resell those. Those are, that's the, that's really the resolution that's going to allow us to sell the, the previous agenda item. Yeah, we're, we're not going to re, we're not going to resell those last two properties because they've actually been redeemed, they've been paid off by the, the, the property owner.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the resolution? Move in second, discussion.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I need to excuse myself to get back to the, to the L. County.
Thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you.
Honitor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item nine, uh, is an action item to approve or amend a resolution to TDAHCA. The home, call them. How do you put it?
It's just to. It's just to amend it.
Okay, and what does the amendment entail?
We had to put, uh, or on the date, they wanted the date on the very top on the resolution.
Oh, okay.
And they wanted, we have put Stark County, and they wanted us to put County of Stark.
Okay. Move for the amendment?
I'll take the motion.
Move in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item, uh, ten is an action item, this is authorizing the two twenty-nine and three first district courts to join existing Webb County four oh six oh on the veteran treatment.
Yes, Judge, thank you very much, Commissioners. Um, this is a program which we've met with the program directors out of Webb County. Uh, what this is, we, we contacted also our Veterans Administration, uh, Mr. Joel Science, and, uh, he was at the presentation, so was District Judges Analisa Garza, uh, District Judge Jose Luis Garza, uh, myself, uh, Mr. Romar Escobar in his office, uh, and members of the probation department. What this is, is a program where we identify veterans, uh, that have served in the armed forces that have criminal cases. If they, uh, meet and agree to certain requirements, they are pulled out of the regular dockets and placed into a, uh, intense program through this, through this, uh, veterans, uh, treatment program wherein they receive counseling for PTSD, uh, post-traumatic stress syndrome, for substance abuse, and, uh, several requirements. They check in with them on a weekly basis, and if they're successful after eighteen months, they are released from their prosecution oftentimes. Uh, that's why you have the involvement of the prosecutors, because if it's, let's suppose the guy is charged with a, a crime that will get him, uh, a murder, well, you don't want to let him off on an eighteen-month sentence, uh, of this program. But a lot of times, we have misdemeanor cases, and we have, uh, some substance abuse cases where our veterans are not, uh, treated properly, they aren't given the proper attention, and so, uh, this is a program that we can use to help, uh, help them out. Um, it comes at a cost, uh, of zero to the county, uh, it is completely funded through the grant. This was done in the four hundred and six judicial district court out of Webb County, it started there, and they're branching out into making it a regional, uh, program. Uh, I believe, uh, Jim Hogg today, possibly Duval and Zapata will be entertaining the, the motion as well.
You know, I, I really think it's a very good program, and what I like the best is that, that zero, that it calls zero. Uh, and who better to know than the judicial that's hearing the case whether they qualify or not, so, you know, I think it's a very good program.
I move that we are authorized to join the existing program.
Move in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Item ten is an action item, this is to approve a new bank account at the depository for a public defender grant. Is there a motion or do you need an explanation from Mr. Carter?
No, I only, we have a new bank account.
Move in second, approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one are budget amendments. Move in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty is an action item, this is to approve a donation in the amount of a thousand dollars from the House files to Stark County by, by the commission for.
Thirty-three dollars we could get, we could either, we could either with a thousand. Anyway, same motion.
Did I call for the vote?
Yes. Who, who start, start, uh, product?
Enterprise.
Enterprise.
Enterprise. There's a company that's interested in this. I don't know.
Another one. I don't know. 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 I don't know.
Did I call for the vote?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. It is eleven thirty-five, a pursuant section five five one point oh seven four. We will now move into executive session to discuss order of salaries. It's, uh, twelve ten, and we're back in open session. The only thing we covered was order of salaries. Is there a motion to approve?
I do so, yeah.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved in second. Honitor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.